Okay, why don't you, you know, we're lucky to have Dean with us today and I know he's got some other things to do. So, why don't we just quickly go over the agenda and then we'll bring him up to do his report. And do I have one card on this item?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Richard Williams, Office of the City Clerk. Yes, we have items, we have cards on all items.
So, but what I think I'll do, we'll take the card on him after. So, why don't you just read his item and then we'll get right to it.
I'm sorry, sir, did you want me to read item one or all of the items?
Well, why don't we just do the one that deals with Mr. Logan?
Okay. Item number one is motion Wesson Rue relative to an invitation to Mr. Dean Logan, the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder/County Clerk, to provide an update on the county's voting solutions for All People Project and to discuss vote center placement.
Okay. Come on forward. And we really appreciate you popping down the street. And if I could get some quiet in the back, but we do appreciate you coming. So, why don't we start off with, you know, your report. But first, let me say that I'm joined today by Councilman Price, who is pinch hitting and really appreciative for Mr. Harris Dawson. So, we have a quorum. Let's get started.
Great. Good morning, President Wesson, Councilmember Price. It's great to be here. I'm Dean Logan, the Registrar Recorder, County Clerk for Los Angeles County. I'm very pleased to be here. I have with me my colleague Erin Navarez, who's the Manager of Government and Legislative Affairs in my office. And we're here to give you an update on the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative that the county has undertaken. And of course, this has particular relevance for the city as our rollout of this new voting experience in Los Angeles County corresponds to the first election that will be consolidated with the city elections in 2020. So, we're pleased to give you an update today and want to start out by just expressing my appreciation for the great cooperation that we've had and the collaboration that we've had with the City Clerk, Holly Walcott, and her office have been tremendous partners in this effort and as well as other county departments, the county library, or the, I'm sorry, the city library, the neighborhood councils have all been part of our outreach in this effort and will continue to be important partners as we move forward. So, just a little bit of background, we've been on a trajectory for a while in California of moving forward with progressive voter registration and election law in California. In the last five to six years, we've seen an onslaught of new initiatives statewide with regard to elections, starting with the provisions for online voter registration, moving towards online tools that allow voters to look up information and track their vote by mail ballots through websites, and the recent adoption of pre-registration of 16- and 17-year-olds, which has been incredibly successful in the state. We've had over, in the first rollout of that, we had over 80,000 people statewide register, pre-register as 16- and 17-year-olds, the vast majority of those here in Los Angeles County. So, we think that that's going to be a particularly influential change. In 2017, we saw the move towards the new Motor Voter Program, which is the automatic voter registration program that automatically, when people interact with the state DMV, if they meet the qualifications to be a registered voter, they automatically become a registered voter. So, it moves us from an opt-out to an opt, or yeah, from an opt-in to an opt-out system. So, unless an individual chooses not to be registered during that DMV transaction, they automatically become registered to vote. That also gave way to our move towards conditional voter registration, which is the first form of same-day voter registration in California, which allows voters who miss the administrative deadline for voter registration to still register and vote, leading up to an on-election day. Right now, that's limited to voters, excuse me, to those individuals coming into the registrar's office in order to do that, or to do that in an early voting site. As you'll see with our new initiative with the vote centers, that will allow voters to do that at any location when we move forward with the new initiative. So, 2018 really was the move in the state towards the authorization of vote centers, which is a key piece of the initiative that we're doing here in LA County. There were five counties that piloted the vote center concept in the June 2018 primary. And again, we're on deck to go with that in 2020. So, locally, a little bit of background on our project. As I think you all know, we have a voting system in LA County that is at the end of its life cycle. It has served us well and performed well, but it is, it's old technology. And not only is it old technology, but the usability doesn't match with the way voters and citizens expect to interact with systems today. It's antiquated technology. It lacks flexibility and adaptability. And we were in a precarious situation where there really has been no commercial system available to replace that based on the complexity and size of Los Angeles County. There just really has not been a voting system on the market to replace it. So, we, back in 2009, initiated a project in LA County to undertake a human-centered design approach to look at this from a holistic standpoint, say, rather than just looking at it as a technology problem, to look at it as how do we modernize the voting experience for our voters in Los Angeles County? And how do we do that with some goals in mind? And some of those goals included, we wanted this to be a publicly owned voting system. We did not want to be limited to a proprietary closed system that locked us into a contract with one particular vendor for a long period of time. We wanted this to be a publicly owned system. We wanted to spur innovation in the voting systems market so that the effort that we put forth here in LA County can be leveraged by other jurisdictions around the state and even beyond the state of California. And in doing that, we wanted to encourage a regulatory environment that would allow for agile development of a voting system and certification and implementation of voter-centered development. In doing that, establishing LA County as a new model for voting system development and implementation, and again, to make our research available to others who want to move in a similar direction. So, as I said, we adopted a voter center, a human-centered design approach. We really focused first on what is it that voters expect and desire in a positive voting experience that rises to the significance of the impact of their vote? And in doing that, we have engaged over 3,800 voters, poll workers, election administrators, and citizens in that process. And we've taken that feedback and that led to the design of the new voter experience that we're beginning to roll out, first phase in this November election and then the full implementation, starting in 2020. So, here are the components of that new voter experience that we're leading towards. There are a number of pieces to this. It includes a modern tally system that was developed using an open source platform and that will be publicly owned by LA County. We own the intellectual property for that, so it is something that we can leverage different partners in the market, but also preserve our original design. It involves what we refer to as an interactive sample ballot, which I'll talk more about in a moment. The key component is the ballot marking device, which you see in the image in front of you right now. And that is the device that voters will use at the vote centers, and I'll talk about vote centers here in just a moment. But it is a device that allows voters to mark their ballot in a way that results in a human-readable paper ballot that can be audited and recounted and that does not give the voter an opportunity to make ambiguous marks on their ballot. So, it really eliminates that concern that has existed with, back to the dimple chads on punch cards and the errant marks that people make on optical scan ballots. Central to this are vote centers.
Hey, Dean, hold a second.
Citizens move that, not really, it was just a pad here punching.
No, it's completely customizable, and I'll show on a different slide. It's actually designed for accessibility and usability, so the touchscreen that you see in the middle there can be tilted, so if a voter's in a wheelchair, or if they're just tall or short, they can adjust that to their needs. It also allows the voter to use headphones if they want to use an audio ballot. It presents the ballot in any language that the voter needs to see and allows them actually to toggle between the language. So, if you wanted to, one of the things we learned from voters in our research is that there are many voters who prefer on the ballot measures because they're complex text and legal issues. They prefer to hear that in their original language, their native language. But when it comes to the contests, they're familiar with the terms of council member or senator or governor, and they're fine with that in English. So, this actually allows them to toggle back and forth on that. Likewise, the audio, where today, the audio ballot that's available for accessible voting is strictly audio. In other words, you either hear it or you see it. On this system, the voter controls that. So, if they want to hear it and see it, they can do that. If they want to blackout the screen and only hear it in the audio, they can do that as well. So, it's really customizable to the needs of the individual voter. Vote centers are central to this. I'll talk about that in a moment. Key to the vote centers are electronic poll books, because with vote centers, voters will be able to go to any location in the county. They will no longer be limited to going to only a single location in their neighborhood on Election Day. They can go to any location in the county and get their local ballot. So, if you work in downtown LA, but you live in Santa Monica, and you want to go to the Central Library and vote, you can go to the Central Library and get your Santa Monica ballot and vote that. And finally, recognizing the vote by mail is still a significant component. We have over 2.1 million of our voters who vote automatically by mail. We've redesigned our vote by mail ballot to be more intuitive, more user-friendly, easier to mark, easier to return, and that we are actually rolling out in this November election. So, let me talk a little bit about-
And they're just, Dean, again, they're just easy to return, free to return, correct?
Correct. So, no stamp necessary to return your vote by mail ballot, starting this November, and that will continue moving forward. So, the vote center concept, and this was part of an act adopted by our legislature called the Voters' Choice Act, and this really, this gives us the local option. So, it's not a state mandate. It gives counties the option to move to this methodology. And the Voters' Choice Act methodology, again, moves us away from a single-day, single-location voting model that we've had for so many, literally decades, to vote centers. And vote centers are located throughout the county. They're accessible. They have parking. And again, vote, any voter in the county can go to any of those locations. They're open for an 11-day period, so they will open starting 10 days before the election, which means they'll be open for two weekends leading up to the election. That final weekend before the election, we actually increased the number of vote centers. And again, any voter can go there. They can customize their voting experience, mark their ballot. Then those ballots will come back and be centrally counted at our facility on Election Day. So, it really is about meeting voters where they are. So, instead of voters having to come and find the voting experience at a single location, use a single device, it expands that to allow them to go to a place that they're comfortable or also to give us visibility. So, one of the things we really see beneficial about this is if there's a farmer's market on the weekend before the election and there's a lot of activity and we know there's going to be a lot of people there, we can set up a mobile vote center and advertise that. So, voters who are at that farmer's market will see that, and if they're ready to cast their ballot, they can participate in that. So, again, the philosophy is really meeting people where they are instead of them seeking out that service from us. And the other benefit of the vote centers is it will allow us to fully leverage the provisions of the conditional voter registration law, which means that those vote centers will be places where people can register to vote, they can change their registration, they can change their party affiliation. All of those services will be available during that 11-day period. So, for the most part, that should, over time, eliminate, for the most part, provisional ballots, because any issue that a voter has with their registration will be able to be resolved onsite at that particular location. So, let me just stop there and say that specifically, right now, where we're at in the project is, the key to the success of this is where we place those vote centers. They have to be in places that voters feel comfortable going to, that they feel are accessible, that are visible in the community. And we're in the process right now of a very significant effort that we call our Vote Center Placement Assessment. We're working with a company called Placeworks, who is specifically skilled in placement of public facilities. We're conducting geospatial analysis to identify locations that are convenient and accessible. We're working with community-based organizations. We will facilitate over 70 meetings throughout the community, starting later this month and going for the next year, to ask for feedback from the public on where are the places that would be most convenient, most accessible, but also where voters would feel comfortable participating in the process. From there, then we have to go into a significant voter outreach and education program, because even though this experience was designed by and for voters in LA County, we know that it's just human nature to expect at the next election that things are still the same. So, we're going to have to do a significant outreach effort to ensure that voters know this is coming. And again, the city has been a great partner in this as well. One, I'll add a couple anecdotes there. We conducted some focus groups and we learned some really interesting feedback from the community. We learned that some of our voters associate public buildings like city halls as being an ideal place for a vote center. They think that's a place that recognizes the significance of the voting experience. Yet, we heard from other sectors of our electorate that said that they would not be comfortable going to a city hall to cast their ballot. They would rather be in a community club or something that they associate less with government facility.
Are we only talking about public facilities for these vote centers, or could they be on some private property?
No, they can be on private property as well. And the beauty of this model is that we can meet the needs of both of those sectors of voters that we heard from. So, we can have vote centers at city halls and at public facilities for those voters who associate it with that, but we can also have them in shopping centers or in other locations, transit centers, that type of thing, to meet those needs. So, it really gives us that flexibility to meet all of those needs. We're also adopting, to a certain extent, a commercial model. We talk often about the fact that you can go downtown and you can see that on a four-block radius, there may be two or three Starbucks, and there's a reason that the customers go to their particular Starbucks. And we want voting to be like that as well. So, there may be multiple vote centers in a particular geographic area, and that's designed to meet the needs and the desires of particular voters in the community. So, I mentioned that we've revamped our vote by mail ballot. I'm particularly excited about this, because this is the first phase of the project, and we're actually rolling this out for this November election. So, if you're a vote by mail voter, on October 9th, we begin mailing our ballots for the November 6th general election, and you will see that the ballot is different. It's much more user-friendly. You no longer have to find the number in the book and then correspond that on the ballot card. It's all on one card, and you mark next to the name of the candidate or the response to the measure. And you can return that, again, no postage required. We also have recognized that there are a significant number of our vote by mail voters who like to receive the ballot through the mail, but they prefer to return that ballot into a ballot box. They don't want to put it back into the mail stream. So, we now have over 100 vote by mail drop-off locations throughout the county, mostly at libraries and public facilities, where prior to the election, if you, once you've received and voted your vote by mail ballot, you can drop that off at a drop-off location ahead of the election.
Let me ask a quick question.
Sure.
You know, we are the biggest city within the county. Do you have any ideas as to how many vote centers will be in the city of Los Angeles, or how are you going to sort through that?
Yeah, so we certainly recognize that, and we recognize, not only from a population base and a registered voter base, is the city of LA our largest jurisdiction, but we also recognize that there are a lot of other voters who live in LA County who come into the city to work. And so, that will be a consideration in that as well. That's part of the Vote Center Assessment Project that we're doing right now. So, I don't have a precise number for you. The law requires us to use a formula, so there's a minimum, there's a floor, in terms of the number of vote centers we have to have countywide. That figure right now is at about 900, but we are not limited by that. So, the feedback we get through these public meetings and as we do this assessment, we can go beyond that, and we recognize that the city of LA is really going to be the heart of that particular process.
And you, at the beginning of your presentation, referenced the good working relationship that you have with the city of Los Angeles. So, will we be involved in that process when it comes to assessing the needs and how many of these centers we would have?
Absolutely. So, that can happen in a number of ways. It's already happening in terms of our partnership with the City Clerk and city departments in terms of the community meetings. Once we have the feedback for that and we do our preliminary analysis and kind of have our map of potential locations, there will be public meetings and public hearings on that before that goes forward. We're happy to come back here to this committee or to-
Great.
-committee as a whole and to do a presentation on that as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, that's the vote by mail. I mentioned the ballot marking device, and thank you, Councilmember Price, for your question, because we already covered a lot of this, but I did want to point out a couple other features of this. One of the things we're particularly proud about with the ballot marking device and the availability at the vote centers is the accessible features of this device. It's been a long-term tension in the country of how do we balance access and security of voting equipment? And in particularly, for voters with disabilities, while we have a legal requirement under federal law to provide at least one device in each voting location that allows a voter with a disability to vote independently, that equipment has been subpar at best. It really has been relegated to where a voter with a disability has to identify themselves as needing that assistance, and then they're usually kind of off in the corner of a particular polling place. What this device offers is that all voters can use the same device. So, the accessibility feature is you don't have to disclose a disability. You can actually customize this to your own use. A voter who doesn't have the ability to physically touch the print, the physical ballot, can still use this ballot, print out a human-readable ballot, and it goes into the ballot box on the back of the device, and they can do that without ever having to touch the ballot. We did significant work with the Cerebral Policy Center of LA County when we were doing the design of this, and we took the prototype back out to that facility once we had the design, and we watched voters, who are longtime voters, by the way, who vote in every election, but who told us they've never been able to vote a secret ballot, a private ballot. They've always had to have the assistance of a family member or a caregiver. And we watched them use the prototype of this device and vote completely independently without the assistance of anyone else. So, we're very proud of that, and we think that that's going to serve us well moving forward. The final feature I'll mention is the interactive sample ballot. We often get asked about the fact that we're a society today that everybody is connected to their mobile devices and the customization of that, and that's everyday, every function part of our lives. So, while we don't have the, we don't believe that we have the security to go to an entirely electronic ballot or an internet voting basis, we recognize that there is a place for those devices in the voting experience. So, what we will roll out in 2020 is, in addition to that paper sample ballot that we mail to every voter, we will make available, on an optional basis, an electronic version of that sample ballot that voters can interact with, leading up to their voting experience. And if they wish to, not required, they can pre-mark that sample ballot, just like we encourage them to mark their booklet and bring it with them to the polling place. They can pre-mark that sample ballot on their device. It'll create a QR code, and when they go to the vote center, they can scan that into the device, and it will pre-populate their ballot. And they can then review that. They can make changes to the ballot if they want to, but it will expedite their voting experience. And we believe that that will kind of facilitate, again, that familiarity of a user experience that people like. So, with that, let me show a very quick, this is a very quick animated video that kind of covers what I just talked about, and then I'd be happy to take questions.
To meet the evolving needs of our nearly 5 million voters, Los Angeles County is challenging traditional ideas about voting systems. The days of inking your ballot are rapidly coming to an end. In the next few years, innovations and new technology will revolutionize the way you vote. Let's take a look at some of the changes you'll see. You know how voting includes paper sample ballots for your review? Get ready for a sample ballot that is interactive and accessible, providing a flexible and trustworthy voting method. This interactive ballot will let you mark it, generate a QR code for scanning and uploading, and review your selections at a vote center on a modern, sleek touchscreen with customizable viewing options for your preferred language, text size, and contrast. Voting will be simple, efficient, and cost-effective. Using input from the voting public and engaging expert designers, Los Angeles County's voting system has been reimagined to use a high-tech ballot marking device that still produces a paper ballot for accountability and accuracy. The best part? Voters will be able to vote anywhere in the county as early as 10 days prior to the election. Are you excited yet? By pioneering a voter-centered approach to design, Los Angeles County's new voting system will maximize technology to make it easier to cast your vote and enrich your voting experience for today and tomorrow.
That was well, that was well done. You know, at the appropriate time, I could see us having a conversation with our Channel 35 and making this something that we would air, you know, several times during the day.
We would welcome that, because as I said, we know that, as excited as we are about this, the key to the success is the public education and the preparation of voters. And again, we're rolling this out for the March 2020 election, so that process, as soon as the November election is over this year, that process of outreach and education needs to begin immediately.
Well, we again want to continue to work with you, and I'm sure Holly and her people want to be engaged, and they're very good and very helpful. But I just want to thank you for coming and thank you for your work on this issue. When you have so many states and cities throughout this nation that are doing everything that they can to decrease voter turnout, it makes us feel good when we're trying to do the exact opposite. And I know that there may be people that think that we could do more, and maybe we could do more, and we should explore that. But at least I think we're moving in the right direction, and as a big city, and as of what we, I hope people view us as a progressive city, we should be doing these types of things. So, I again want to thank you. I'm going to take you up on your offer to come back to speak to the council as a whole. We need to work together, because there's going to be some, you know, you have some people who have voted for 30 years and they go to the same garage-
Right.
-around the corner, and that's going to be a change, and we're going to have to help people, you know, move on.
Absolutely.
Change is the most difficult thing to do, period. But it looks like we're moving in the right direction, and I want to thank you. Mr. Price, did you want to say anything?
Just also say thank you to Dean and the, Dean and the team. You know, during my, during my days in the legislature in the, that took distant past, I chaired the Elections Committee.
Yes.
And in fact, got to know you, Dean, at that time.
Right.
And we were talking about the early voting, the same-day voting, the pre-registration, even the voting center idea. So, it's exciting to see now, years later, these things are really coming before and providing citizens with the kind of access and opportunities to participate. Do you envision that these voting centers are going to be requiring more or less volunteers? You know, we have a cadre now of poll workers that do great work. How is their role going to change in this process?
No, that's a great question. So, it really is, it will be a different staffing model. We do believe there is still a role for community poll workers who will work at these vote centers, but we also think that we will staff them with more traditional seasonal staff, county seasonal employees to be the technical staff and the lead staff, and then we'll augment those with community poll workers, because again, we're going to be open over a 10-day period as well as on Election Day. So, while we use 25,000 poll worker, community poll workers today for a single day, we'll need to distribute those across the new locations over the 10-day period.
Again, so I thank you very much. I know you have another meeting. We're going to let you do that. We'll be calling you back, and I'm going to begin taking public comment now, so we won't vote on this item until we complete our public comment. It was well done. Thank you so much-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
...for your partnership. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we walk through the additional items, and then I'll begin calling people from the public.
Item number, item number two is motion Rue, Recore and Busceno Corr, it's relative to a request to the City Ethics Commission to draft an ordinance and report on the implications of increasing the matching funds rate in both primary and general elections for all candidates who qualify for matching funds, and to report on whether the maximum per contribution matches in Section 49.7.27 of the Campaign Finance Ordinance should be revised to cap matches at lower levels, and an instruction to the city administrative officer to report on the impacts these changes may have on the city's general fund. On this item, I'd like to note that we have received a community impact statement from the Studio City Neighborhood Council. Item number three is City Ethics Commission Report and City Attorney Report and Ordinance relative to amending the Los Angeles Municipal Code to revise matching fund regulations, pardon me, and consideration of City Ethics Commission proposed amendments to the Campaign Finance- Finance Ordinance regarding the matching funds program. This is a time limit file. Last day for council action is October 19th, 2018. Item number four is Resolution Rue, O'Farrell, and Chief Legislative Analyst to Report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for Proposition Four, the Children's Hospital Bonds Initiative, which would authorize $1.5 billion in bonds for the construction, expansion, renovation, and equipping of children's hospitals in California. Item number five is Resolution Weston Corres and Chief Legislative Analyst Report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program support for H.R. 6043 and S. 3032, the strengthening the Tenth Amendment through Entrusting States Act, which would allow state governments to enforce their marijuana laws without undue federal intervention. Item number six is City Clerk and City Attorney Reports, Resolution, and Ordinance, calling a special election on March 5th, 2019, and a special runoff election, if necessary, on May 14th, 2019, for the purpose of filling a vacancy in the Fifth District of the Board of Education of the Los Angeles Unified School District. This item is scheduled in council today at 10:00.
Thank you very much. Okay, I want to start off, I want to say, I think I saw Ms. McAllister first. And so Ms. McAllister, in fact, what we're going to do, everybody is going to be given two minutes. So Ms. McAllister, we're going to have you come up first, and then Mr. Herman, who I saw earlier, will come up second. Mr. Herman, just you come up second. Good morning, Ms. McAllister.
So what items?
Uh, one second.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Is this general public comment?
This is all public comment. So they will, they will talk to their items and incorporate their general public comment because we want to make sure that I can start council on time. So everybody that's here today will be given two minutes if they want two minutes, except for, I think, we have a public, we have a community impact statement, and I'll give more time for that. So Ms. McAllister, this is for any item that you're eligible to speak on in your general public comment. Two minutes is yours. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that we do have a voting issue here in Los Angeles. Only 10% of the voters are voting. That's, that's, that's really bad. If we bring 100 people in here, only 10 are voting. That's really bad. But I don't think we need to solve this with machines. That's not, that's not why people are not voting. They're not voting because 90% or 80% of the residents here are illegal aliens. They cannot vote, okay? And if we catch them at the polls, we're going to have ICE at each one of these areas. And if we catch them trying to vote, they're going to go to jail and get deported. That's the problem. See, that, we got the people here. They're here, but they're illegal. Okay, now, what about the elderly? They had, like you said, the voting place right across the street. They can go over there with their wheelchairs. Now, where are they going to go? They have to get transportation, so they may not vote. So the voter turnout may even be less now than 10%. So I don't think this is a good idea. I think the problem is the way the city and the county and the state is being run. Not that people are not voting, they're tired of these politicians keep raising taxes, keep all these fees and everything, and they're just getting disgusted, just say, forget about it, we don't want to vote. So we need you guys to change. We don't need voting, the voting apparatus to change. So that's what I think about that. And now, let's talk about all of the topics that I want to talk about. I think we need to lower this $25,000 cap for people who want to get on the ballot and run for office. We need to lower that because there are some good people out here, grassroots people in the community, they cannot afford $25,000. We need to lower that to about $10,000 or $15,000 so we can get some of you career politicians out of office because you're doing nothing but ruining this state and especially Los Angeles. So we need to lower that, and I don't think you need any more money, campaign money, because there's no accountability. You never give receipts on where this money is going, and politicians are all in Vegas and whorehouses and everything else with our money. So I want some receipts. Thank you.
Mr. Herman, please come forward. So, and then after, I'm going to want Rob Quan, Calvin Sloan. Hold on one second, Mr. Herman, if you would, please. If I could get, like I said, Rob, you'll be next, Calvin Sloan, and Carrie Kaiser. Yes, Mr. Herman?
Mr. Logan should hear why there are still at the polls registered sex offenders working on the polls. Why is that, Mr. Logan? Why do we have sex offenders registered at these polls working? I'll tell you why. Because if you haven't heard the news, why Jose Weisar isn't here for the record.
Let's stay on topic, Mr. Herman.
I'm just saying Jose Weisar is not here.
No, Mr. Herman, let's stay on topic. You see all these people, hold this time. Let's just stay on topic.
Implied, again, you're not safe at the polls. We have people turning in these booths who are registered sex offenders, and that's why I don't go to them. I'm afraid one of these cocksuckers is going to stick his dick where it doesn't belong.
Mr. Herman, let's stay on topic.
For voting. Then let's go to item in the rear regarding children hospital bonds. Why do we have children hospital bonds when the infrastructure of this city, the infrastructure of the community are so fucked up? And we're asking to expand constructions and renovation when children are dying throughout the country, throughout the nation? Because we have a bunch of dick-sucking, cock-sucking, stupid politicians like yourself who don't provide protection when renovating and using the full cost and measure of all this fucking money that you waste? And then the purpose of filling a vacancy for Los Angeles Unified School District in the Fifth District? Well, we know that the school district also has sexual misconduct, so why are we looking for a special runoff when you can't even cope with Jose's Weisar sexual misconduct, that fucking bald wetback?
Okay, is it, is it Rob? I see you. I'm looking for, is Calvin Sloan, Carrie? I'm trying to get to everybody, so if I call you, please get in line. It saves us a few minutes. Carlos Amador? Yes, Rob, I mean, Mr. Quan.
Thank you. While I strongly support the Ethics Commission's recommendations today, I believe it's important that this council ensure we uphold the actual purposes behind our matching funds program and lower the maximum match per contribution to near $100. This will ensure that we're not heavily subsidizing the larger donors who make up nearly 90% of the value of all contributions. It also becomes important for us to lower the aggregate threshold. At $25,000, that's twice as high as the next highest municipality, Washington, D.C. It's five times as high as New York City, even though our districts aren't even twice as large. Lowering the max match is important, so is, and so is ensuring that we have an accessible system that has been updated and given, and incorporates the developments of the last three decades. In 2015, we saw most candidates not qualifying and receiving funds until 20 days out before Election Day. With early vote, that's not going to cut it. A few weeks ago, a wise man on this council said, quote, "If we're going to turn the city around, then equity needs to be a part of every conversation we have." Well, I'm happy to see that we are seeing one of the most meaningful reforms imaginable and pursuing and ensuring that pursuit. Every issue in politics is to some extent a battle between the many versus the money. During the convention debates, James Madison warned that if the power is not immediately derived from the people in proportion to their numbers, we may have a paper Confederacy, but that will be all. Today, we see something rare. I hope that we get a lowering of the max match, and we see those in power having the humility to loosen their grasp on power and open the process up, knowing that it will produce a better system for us all. 2020 is going to be different, and because of early vote, it's going to be really different. We're going to be aligning our elections regardless of what happens in D.C. By ensuring voting, we actually incorporate all of these reforms and get a better system, we're going to ensure that 2020 is going to be a transformative election in the city of L.A., regardless of what happens anywhere else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could I have the next speaker, please? And then if I can get Kathy Fang after, yes, sir, identify yourself and go.
My name's Calvin Sloan, and thank you for inviting, or having me speak. I wanted to take a larger picture and state that we are at a pivotal moment right now for American democracy and the practice of democracy itself. Across the globe, countries like Brazil, Turkey, Hungary, and Poland are de-democratizing in a new era of resurgent authoritarianism. Washington, D.C. is broken with super PACs and dark money organizations dominating the election landscape on behalf of casino magnates who have their own primaries, Sheldon primary. In Republican-led states, the GOP legislatures are preempting municipalities from enacting their own campaign finance reforms. This is, we're in a very dangerous moment, and all of this makes what we're doing today, the Unrig Coalition, incredibly important. We are here to expand democracy, to live up to the ideals of which this nation was founded and of which we have drifted so far, unfortunately, particularly in the campaign finance realm. I believe this is of utmost importance, and I appreciate your votes in favor of this proposition. I hope you do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker, and then I think I asked for Kathy Fang, and then I want, I saw Jill Stewart earlier, come on up, and let's, let's go.
Hi, I'm Carrie Kaiser. I live in Los Feliz. I'm in Council District Four, and I just wanted to voice my support for items two and three, lowering the maximum matched per contribution to $100 and passing the recommendations from the Ethics Commission so that we can empower small donors with a six-to-one match. These recommendations would give us a much more accessible system and remove unnecessary barriers to entry. They would promote opportunities for a more diverse set of candidates to run for office regardless of wealth, personal wealth, or access to wealth. The high cost of running for office has created a massive barrier for grassroots candidates, and changes like these would be empowering for voters in L.A. and increase political participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hey there.
Hi, good morning, Council President Weston and Council Member Price. We are so pleased that these two issues are here before you. We've been working very closely with Los Angeles County to test and to really work out a new voting system that's going to be responsive to where people are at. We think that this is an exciting move because it's really responsive to our very, very busy lives and allowing us to choose where we go to vote, not just be tied to the one place and the one day. What I'll say is that they did a lot of testing to make sure that people with disabilities and people with language needs were fully thought through in the development of the voting system. And so for the first time, instead of having this clunky thing that you have to compare a little sample ballot next to the voting system and hope that you mark the right dot, we're going to have accurate voting that's actually on paper, but where you can see your choices marked next to your markings. So that's exciting. Last piece, Council Member Price, you and I have worked very closely around a lot of election issues, including making sure that 17-year-olds could preregister. The exciting thing is that now with these new vote centers, you'll be able to do one-stop shop for all of that. If you've missed the voter registration deadline, you can go to a vote center and actually be able to register and vote at the same place. So it's exciting. Unfortunately, not yet for 2018. So in 2018, we're talking about approximately 10 vote centers in L.A. Not until 2020 are we going to get the full rollout. So coming to the next item, too, we offer a full-hearted support. We do think that this, it's about time, and we're so thankful to Council President for moving this issue forward. So thank you. And we're excited to be able to work with the various council offices. We do ask you to pay attention to two items. One is the definition of town halls, and we think that it should be defined more clearly. And the second is that the aggregate threshold for the total number of contributions that you need to submit in order to qualify, we think needs to lower from 25,000 to 10,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good to see you. Ms. Stewart, please come forward.
Good morning, gentlemen. Jill Stewart, Executive Director of the Coalition to Preserve L.A. I wanted to just notice that the public matching funds program, which we support everything that the Ethics Commission is proposing, but we're asking for some additions. The 1993 program that they're trying to improve no longer fulfills its intent. At first, the public matching fund program succeeded, and it garnered a lot of good media attention. I actually covered it as a journalist. Los Angeles saw a major, crucial jump in female representation to five women out of 15 city council members in the 1990s. There is no debate over how these five key female leaders brought strong, fresh, effective ideas to City Hall, and we were all better for it. Now things have changed. The program today is failing, and we see that the contributions, oh boy, somebody's calling me on the phone, so now I can't read my message, but I'll say, I don't know who it is. But I'll say that the $100 contribution level, we'd like to see it lowered. We're very, very, very for that. We want to see the small donors brought into the system, brought back to the system, encouraged voting again. We think it's crucial to do that. And we're seeing too many, the two, excuse me, two-high qualification rules. That's making the public financing system right now, it's actually the most inaccessible system in the United States. So what we'd like to see is, we'd like to see a lowered maximum match per contribution to $100 so we don't further empower the big donors with this program. We want to bring in the little guys. It's really important, especially in low-income areas such as where Monica Rodriguez represents. I know the area well. To get that many people together who can give more than $100 is really, really hard. Secondly, we need to lower the aggregate qualifying threshold. Again, this is an equity issue. You can get that in Brentwood, but not in many council districts. Thank you.
And thank you for a first here. That's the first time in the middle of a speech we got an important phone call, Ms. Stewart, so thanks for the levity. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Carlos Amador, and for identification purposes only, I'm also a board member in the Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council.
Welcome.
But I'm not speaking on behalf of them, of course. I'm here to speak in support of item two and three. I believe that we want to make sure that we ask the committee to support lowering the maximum matching contributions to $100 so that as part of city election campaigns. I want to make sure that this reform is, happens to make sure that we're no longer empowering big donors who have an oversized influence over our local elections. Also, I want to make sure that the committee passes the recommendation from the Ethics Commission so that we empower small donors, community members essentially, with a six-to-one match, to make sure that this type of reform encourages community leaders who know very well what the issues in the neighborhoods are, instead of allowing and drowning them out of elections by big money, big-money candidates and big-money pockets. The influence in our big, the influence of big-money money in our politics influences every issue in our City Hall. I want to make sure that by passing this type of campaign finance reform, we're able to empower our communities and constituents across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get David Levitas, Holly Mosher, Elena Watstel, and Jonathan Linden. And let me tell you, we're going to cut off anyone else from signing up to speak. We're just not going to have enough time. We may not make it through everybody that's here today because it's important that I bring up the commission so that they can give us their presentation. So if we can be as quickly as we can, that'll make things move smoother. Welcome, sir. Identify yourself and go ahead.
Thank you, council members. My name's Dr. David Levitas, Executive Director of L.A. Forward, L.A. Forward Action, here today to present a letter from a coalition of over 30 organizations. I have copies. And these organizations include new grassroots groups around the city, as well as established groups like California Clean Money Campaign, Asian Americans Defending Justice, Kiwa, League of Women Voters, L.A. Forward, L.A. Voice, and 30 more. And we all support the passage of the Ethics Commission recommendations, as well as lowering the maximum match per individual, per contributor, to $100 and reducing the aggregate threshold. We know that democracy is under attack in many places. We have a real opportunity to go beyond kind of symbolic resolutions about Citizens United and to actually do something really meaningful. I think, you know, we've seen, as other folks have talked about, the difficulty for grassroots candidates to access funds quickly, and it's going to be even more important on our new electoral schedule and timeline. So it'll be crucial to make it, to facilitate easier access to that. And then second, we think it's vital- And then second, we think it's vital that we lower the max match because it will, one, we shouldn't be subsidizing the amount of money given over $100, which tends to be bigger donors. But two, as we propose, as the Ethics Commission proposes to increase the match rate from two-to-one to six-to-one, we also think it's fiscally responsible to reduce the amount that's matched to 100, keep us in balance. We have nearly $20 million in the trust fund now, but going forward, we think it'll be prudent to reduce the match to 100 and truly empower small rather than large donors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Holly Mosher, and I'm a volunteer with the group Money Out, Voters In. And I'm also a filmmaker, and I made a film about election security back in 2008. And so I've been following this issue for well over a decade, and I really want, on item one, to bring attention, I hope you're listening carefully, to three security issues that are of deep concern. One, the machines being left unattended. Every election, you will see machines unattended. This is a breach of security that could happen, and we need to make sure that will not happen always. Number two, barcodes. You see these barcodes, but there is new, there is technology that can read the candidate's names. There should be no barcodes on our ballots because behind the scenes, we don't know if those are accurate. They can be manipulated, just like a discount can be given to one customer at a store. And third, these are not truly open source. Dean Logan continually says open-source software, but talk to cybersecurity experts. It needs to be truly open source where the public is able to look at the code and not private. So those are my three points. Please review those carefully before anything is implemented in the largest voting district. We have 5 million voters. We have to do this right. It has to be secure. All eyes are on us. So secondly, I also produced a film on the corrupting influence of money in politics. So campaign finance reform is extremely important. So on items two, we need to lower the maximum match so that it is only to the top $115. I love that you did one-seventh so that it'll be capped at the top and it will, you know, go forward in years if the number changes. But it shouldn't be rewarding bigger donors, and we need to lower the aggregate to the 5K, just like New York is. They're doing it well. We can do it well here. And then for item three, you know, I love that you have the recommendations of six-to-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Then if I could get Grace Yu behind this gentleman. Yes?
Hi. Elana Wachtel with the Coalition to Preserve LA. Thanks for having us. So I'm going to speak on items two and three. And right now, we are seeing incredible division in our country. Nativism and tribalism dominate the political landscape. This is being fueled by big donors, by money in politics. Right now, LA has an opportunity to serve as a model. By lowering the matching fund to $100, this opens the process up. It allows everyday people to contribute to the democratic process. Candidates then can actually enter the elections and have a chance to compete. Right now, we're seeing only two women on the city council. We've never had a female mayor. We are, in this city, we are being fueled by big money, both within the city and without, and that is not fair to our democratic process. Secondly, I want to say that we need to lower the aggregate qualifying threshold so that our system is accessible. So right now, at 25K, that is not accessible. New York City has a 5K. We also want to make sure that we empower small donors with the six-to-one match fund and reduce, that will further reduce the influence of big donors. It is critical we level the playing field, particularly in this very divisive time in our country. We are in a dangerous moment, and Los Angeles can be a model for the rest of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jonathan Linden. I am an internist at California Clean Money Campaign. Today, I just wanted to come and express how concerned I am about contributions over $100, how they constitute approximately 90% of the value of all contributions submitted. What we want is most for that to be lowered so that, because most people can't afford to donate over $100, most people in LA, so we want to do even more to boost power to small donors and not big money. Yeah, more accountability to voters, not special interest groups. We want to, yeah, increase power to the small donors. We also urge you to pass the Ethics Commission proposal to increase the matching fund rate to a six-to-one, but only if they lower the amount that qualifies for matching funds from the current 250 for council candidates and 500 for citywide candidates. It wouldn't be right to give $3,000 of public funds to candidates who give 500. But we, we also like, we also like to ask the candidates to make it easier for candidates to qualify by lowering the aggregate contribution totals required to qualify, as mentioned by some other speakers earlier. There is no reason for it to be so much harder to qualify for matching funds in LA than any other city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Previn, I'm going to, Mr. Previn, I'm going to call you up after Ms. Yu, so if you'd move over there because we have limited time. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Wesson and Council Members Price and Rue. My name is Grace Yu, and I have a vested interest because I am a candidate for City Council 2020. And understanding the city ethics campaign match, I have a request. We went from, I understand that you're considering putting the $5 donation requirement of 200 within the district to possibly just 100 people. I think as a candidate, meeting more residents and potential supporters and voters is critical. Instead of decreasing it to 100 individuals donating $5, I'm saying if it is the case that the district is not as financially capable, what if we just decrease the donation requirement from $5 to $1 or $2 to get your 200 base to qualify for the campaign match? This is all about bringing more people into the system, so if we just, that $5 threshold might be too high in certain areas, and we want people to be able to really say that their vote matters, just like we're asking for the six-to-one match. I believe that you could have more involvement and people with skin in the game who would want to be involved. So that is my request, and I'm also requesting that the aggregate, $25,000, be lowered to 10,000.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Previn, I don't really know how much time. Why don't we start? Give you about three minutes, let you roll, and we'll see how.
Well, thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and today, for the first time.
Oh, and let me just, give him his, give him his time. Hold on one second. He has a community impact statement which affords him additional time, so I don't want you to think that. Go on, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn, again, from Studio City Neighborhood Council, and today speaking on behalf of our neighborhood council. And I wanted to report to you and also to the public that we met in our Government Affairs Committee a week ago or so, or a little bit longer, and we discussed these very issues in great detail, sir. We talked about the debate requirement and adjusting it by adding language for a town hall. In the end, the group was very suspicious of that. We talked about what these fine people have been speaking about, which is the threshold to entering the matching fund program. You have to raise, in a council-district election, $25,000 just to get into the program, and money from a family doesn't count. People in our neighborhood were disgusted by that. And when we pointed out that $25,000 is 5,005-dollar contributions, as an example, people realized that is a high bar if you're not an incumbent like Curran Price, who's not on this committee, or David Rue, who's not on this committee, so we don't have a quorum. But those folks felt this was an outrage, that people had to raise all that money just to get into a program. When we looked at the, how it worked out, for example, in 2015, that was a year where I stuck my little hat in the ring and got 500 signatures to get on the ballot, good ones. So that means you have to get, as these fine folks will tell you, 700 or 800 because not everybody's in the district. And the clerk who's here today does such a great job of checking them officially and professionally against the voter rolls, that that seemed to our neighborhood like sufficient support to finally access some of this great public matching money. And for the record, there are 16.1 million, this is per Tristan, who's got his finger on the dashboard up there, as of July 2018, that's the amount in the match fund. And as I think you know, sir, 2 million or more now because of the CPI floods in off the general fund every year. So I understand the desire to push this money out into the community and stimulate debate. So let's talk about the debate and Studio City's idea. Two in the primary, two in the general election, and there's no town hall. Because town hall means the gubernatorial door stands in the middle, and he invites the other candidates, but they don't get to, it's not fair and equitable. So we thought a real debate. You could work on the language. Now, we also noticed, just saying this here, sir, that Section 703 seems to indicate that you and your non-quorum committee can't really, and this council, can't change things until the Ethics Commission's recommendations are either approvable or disapprovable. So I think you have to disapprove and then take the input of all these other folks back to Ethics Commission for some kind of meeting. You can move at a pace, but we want to get these revisions in there. The other revision that was critical, and we thought a great way to kind of achieve the goal of pushing some of the money to the grassroots candidates, was to create something like a qualifying signature stipend. And what we thought was 500 good signatures to get on the ballot is powerful. Rue knows, takes a lot of work. You got to connect with people at a mall or in the supermarket, and guess what? They don't like it. They don't like it when you're out there trying to get the signatures, even though you're trying to enter the system. And, yeah, just give me one more second. I'll wrap it up, sir. I'm going to wrap it up. We thought that that should be, those 500 individual signatures could be counted like an in-kind contribution that the Ethics Commission knows all about, and that could be entered into the window at the beginning so that a candidate who gets on the ballot, if it's a three-to-one match, would get $15,000 to start, to try. Nobody's going to catch Curran Price or David Rue easily. They're going to have to spend that money and expand their reach, but we thought that this was a great idea. And finally, I'm just going to say this, that the neighborhood council laid out those three things. We are supportive of the Ethics Commission's recommendations to increase the match. I thought these people, can I speak on myself for a second, or is that, because we didn't talk about the lowering the 250 to 100, but it's a great idea to go even lower. But thank you for your time, sir, and I would ask you to kick this back to Ethics Commission so that now that people are paying attention, one of the organizations tried to send out an eBlast, you're not going to believe it, they gave the wrong date.
Thank you.
And then they didn't get a chance to correct it because they were so busy. But let's move this forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Correctly, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call one more speaker, then I'm going to ask the department to come up. Trent, Trent Lane, come on, and then we're going to, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Rue if he'd like to make a statement as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members. California Clean Money Campaign has been working with council and the Ethics Commission for a very long time. We are thrilled that this has now come up. We're very happy overall with the Ethics Commission's recommendations. What we worked on before to increase to the two-to-one, four-to-one match helped increase the power of small donors. This will increase it even further. We do think that it is absolutely crucial, though, to lower the maximum amount that can be matched, and that's why we very strongly support Council Member Rue's recommendation to lower the maximum amount that can be matched to the one-seventh level, the $115 for council candidates. So that will be a great improvement in the system. We would like just to raise a couple of other issues for your consideration. One, we do think that the town hall language does need to be tightened up a little bit to make clear that they are really publicly noticed and everybody has a chance to participate and ask questions. The aggregate threshold, as many speakers have said, at $25,000, when we lower the amount from 250 that can be matched to 115, it'll actually make it harder for people to qualify at that $25,000 threshold. So hopefully, before it comes to council, we can potentially work ways to address that. There's no reason for Los Angeles to be so much harder to qualify than New York or other cities that have matching funds. And the other thing, just for discussion, it would be interesting to see for simplification purposes, making the 115, that one-seventh level, actually apply across the board to citywide candidates as well. I think that would, just a little bit of research and discussions whether or not that would be a good idea. I think that's something that could be on the table, so it's simplified closer to the $100 level that people are talking about for everything, but across the board for all candidates. So thank you very much for bringing this up. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. So if I can get Heather and your crew to come forward. You could come forward and take a seat. You know, and before, again, welcome to you all, before you get started, Mr. Rue, would you like to make a statement? I know this is near and dear to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Price, for hearing my motion today. And as you well know, it is co-presented by myself, Council Member Pocahontas Corian, and Council Member Joe Buscaino. With one vote today, we can increase the power of small-dollar donations sixfold. At present, the matching fund rate is as low as one-to-one, and the path to get higher match rates is much more difficult than it needs to be. During recent election cycles, we have seen the voters of Los Angeles stay away from the polls, thinking their voice and their influence can't be heard over the roar of big-money in politics. Increasing the matching fund rate to six-to-one would allow qualified candidates to get support intended by the matching funds program. This will not just support new small donors, but amplify the voices of everyday Angelenos who deserve a seat at the table and a central role in guiding our city. I've been fighting for these reforms for a long time, and I really want to thank the Ethics Commission for spending many hours on this issue, many advocates, advocates, community groups, and many who are here today in this room who spoke up in support, and of course, Council President Wesson for scheduling this item. I also want to bring attention to one crucial recommendation before you. In a letter written by myself and other colleagues and my colleagues, Council Member Pocahontas Corian and Joe Buscaino, to empower small donors fully, we also need to reduce the qualifying match rate so that smaller-dollar donors are matched at the higher rate. Our letter has been, has a specific proposal we are asking you to support. I really want to thank the committee, and I encourage an "I" vote on these sensible reforms. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
I am Heather Holt, the Executive Director for the Ethics Commission. I am joined this morning by our esteemed Commissioner Andrea Ordin and Deputy Executive Director David Tristan, and to my left is Deputy City Attorney Renee Stottle. We're pleased to be able to talk with you today on the last day of summer about the recommendations that the Ethics Commission recently made about the campaign finance program, most notably the matching funds program. Over the course of about six months earlier this year, the Commission considered the campaign finance laws and several possible amendments to those laws. The review was conducted in anticipation of the 2020 move to even-year election schedule in acknowledgement of a couple of council motions about the matching funds program and in the wake of the first complete election cycle for which we have data about the existing matching funds program. As a result of that review, the Commission has made eight recommendations. Three of those are of a more technical nature, but five of them would create substantive changes to the laws, particularly the matching funds program. Two would address the qualification criteria of in-district contributions and debates. A third would address the match rate. The recommendation is to move that to six-to-one for all candidates in all elections. The fourth would increase the maximums, the maximum funding that's available per qualified candidate. Those numbers have remained static since the inception of the program in 1993, and the Commissioners recommend adjusting that for changes in the Consumer Price Index. The fifth substantive recommendation would be to consolidate the two contributor certifications that are currently identified in city law and make that new consolidated certification mandatory. That's a very brief, high-level synopsis. We are more than happy to respond to questions that you have, and again, thank you for considering this.
No, thank you, and I just want to compliment you, your folk, Kathy, who was here earlier, all of the people that have been working on this for some time. I think it was a few years back, we committed to try to move forward and put this in place so that it would be ready for our election cycle in, you know, 2020. It looks like we, we are on... It looks like we are on schedule, so again, I thank you for that. I have no questions. I want to thank the community for coming out. I want to thank them for their well-thought-out, wise recommendations. They obviously put a lot of work into that, and at this point, Mr. Price, what I'd like to do is start moving these items, so that we can figure out when we're going to schedule this in council. And I would hope that the recommendation from this committee would carry a lot of weight with the other members on this council. So did you want to make a statement as well?
Thank you for your work on this and for the broad cross-section of support I think that it's received. It's very impressive, community-based organizations, neighborhood organizations, and other organizations that have weighed in on this, and so I think, sort of has been well-vetted, and I'm confident that these changes are going to increase and improve voter participation and participation in our electoral process in ways we haven't seen before. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you so very much. Okay, so what I'd like to do, Mr. Clerk, if we could move through the voting portion, why don't we start with this issue right, right here? Why don't we start with issues two and, two and three? And so, what I would do is instruct the city clerk to combine these items on the council file index. We would, I would recommend that we approve the Ethics Commission report as amended to incorporate the suggestions by Council Members Rue and Buscaino, clarified by the Ethics Commission City Attorney, and request the City Attorney to come back with the draft ordinance on or by October 12th and adopt the City Attorney's Report and Draft Ordinance on 5. So if there are no opposition to that, I'll use my favorite term, so let it be written, so let it be done. Thank you so very much. So that's approved by this committee. Now, Mr. Clerk, if we can go through the other items?
Sir, did you want me to read those items again? Item number one was motion Wesson, Rue, relative to an invitation to Mr. Dean Logan, the Los Angeles County Register Recorder, County Clerk, to provide an update on the county's Voting Solutions for All People Project and to discuss voter center placement. Item number four was resolution Wesson, Rue, O'Farrell, and Chief Legislative Analyst report, to report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program, support for Proposition Four, the Children's Hospital Bonds Initiative, which would authorize 1.5 billion in bonds for the construction, expansion, renovation, and equipping of children's hospitals in California. Item number five is resolution Wesson, Corretts, and Chief Legislative Analyst report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program, support for H.R. 6043 and S. 3032, the strengthening the Tenth Amendment through Entrusting States Act, which would allow state governments to enforce their marijuana laws without undue federal intervention. And item number five, pardon me, item number six, is city clerk and city attorney reports resolution and ordinance calling a special election on March 5, 2019, and a special runoff election, if necessary, on May 14, 2019, for the purpose of filling a vacancy in the Fifth District of the Board of Education of the Los Angeles Unified School District.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And let's deal with item one. So on item one, without objection, we'll note and file that item. Now, item-
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Would you prefer to receive and file this item inasmuch as the motion has a recommendation?
If that's what you suggest, then I'll follow your suggestion on that.
I suggest.
All right. So now, let's go to item four and five. We'll adopt the CLA reports and resolutions, and on item six, we'll adopt the city clerk, city attorney reports, resolutions, and draft ordinance. Okay, so without objection, all those items will be deemed approved. Mr. Clerk, is there any additional business before this committee?
No, sir, that clears the desk.
Then this committee's adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.